All right, well, let's go ahead and get started this evening. We'll call to order. Yeah. It'd be nice to get this party started. Thanks, Dr. Buck. All right. Can we get a motion and a second to adopt our agenda for our special session this evening?
I move to adopt the agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously, so we will move to item 1.02, oh, 2.01, our compensation package for 2023-2024. Can we get a motion and a second, and then we'll move to questions and discussion? I move that the board approves the proposed compensation package for the 2023-24 school year.
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second? Do we have questions or discussion? Okay. All right. Do we want to ask Dr. Carlson to come up to take some questions? Dr. Carlson, could you come up so we can get ready to take some questions? Thank you. It was because you walked over.
Yep, that's it.
That's right. All right, board members, what questions do we have? Board Member Eslic?
Well, some of these questions I had actually emailed to Dr. Carlson, so I thought maybe we could just review some of those. Do you want me to ask them, or do you want to talk through them?
Whichever the board prefers.
Okay, well, we can just start with, you know, some of the first ones that I sent regarding the admin salary schedule, because there have been a couple of constituents who have reached out because of the way that we, you know, we had asked Team Lee Summit to address the particularly assistant principals and principals across all of our buildings, and being that they were in the bottom third of the metro, to asking Team Lee Summit to address that particular portion of the schedule. And the way that that was done, I think maybe it would help to speak a little bit more to that.
Sure. So, yeah, good, I'm glad you asked. Good question. So, the approach that Team Lee Summit chose to apply to this challenge was to re-index the administrative schedule. As we talked about in February in the work session, all four of our salary schedules are indexed at 2% or 2.5%, 3% or some range therein. The admin schedule and the teacher salary schedule are both indexed at 2%, 2.5%, and 3%. The teacher schedule has 2.25% and 2.35% indexes built into it. And really, when we looked at how do we get step one to be market competitive? We know we were nine of nine. We were last at the start of the admin schedule. But at step 18, we were more towards the middle, or we weren't at the bottom. We were in the bottom third, but maybe not last. So then we looked at if you just put money on the base to try to bring step one up because of the power of the indexing, step 18 just takes off. Just, it would go outside of market. So then we looked at solutions and came up with this concept of re-indexing to 2% and moving step one towards step 18 and holding step 18 constant. So we ran that scenario. We had a lot of discussions in Team Lee Summit about different ways to implement that and how to do it, but then landed on just doing the full transition with the 2% indexing, which then, as you see, the greatest impact is on kind of steps one through six of that admin schedule, and then it tapers off as you go through towards the end. Does that answer your question?
Yes, I think that helps a lot. So one of the other questions that I had was, are the administrative and the teacher schedules indexed differently? I know you kind of mentioned a little bit of a different number.
They're indexed similarly, and that was by design. It's my understanding years ago, you know, it is not uncommon for teachers to move into administration. So that design is similar to where, and Nathan Holder, correct me if I'm wrong, on the teacher schedule, you've got kind of at the beginning towards step one, you have 2% indexing, then it moves to 2.25%, then to 2.5%, 2.75%, and then towards the end at the last steps, so you're talking steps W, X, Y, you're at full 3% indexing there. Where the admin schedule currently as it sits is indexed at 2%, steps one through six, seven through 13 are 2.5%, and steps 13 through 18 are 3%. So similar structure in that indexing, and that indexing allows for money put on the base to ripple through. That's like we discussed in February, when you look at indexing like on the teacher salary schedule, $100 to the base ripples through to step Y on range six to about $180. So rather than have that $180 ripple through to step 18, you know, conceptually, we wanted more of those dollars to go to the front of the admin salary schedule.
So prior to this recommendation, then, the teacher's salary schedule indexing was effectively less than the administrator? Is that correct?
No.
Other way around? Okay, then I'm not capturing this correctly.
No, so, I mean, they both had a range of 2% to 3% indexing in the schedule, depending on the steps where they were at.
Okay. Gotcha, okay. So another part of the questions that I had sent over was regarding trying to improve that middle range of our teacher salary. So what was that conversation like with Team Lee Summit? And how did that recommendation go to help improve? Because when we kind of look at the, what the recommendation looks like in relation to the top 10 in the metro, it doesn't really improve us that much. So there, I have a little bit of a concern there. So can you speak a little bit to that?
I can. And first, I don't want to try, you know, Team Lee Summit's a collaborative group with 15 staff members, two board members. I don't want to try to represent all of their thoughts here, okay? That wouldn't do a service to that in one, answer to one question, but when you look at the teacher schedule, which is also indexed, we have had conversations about how to move step one. You'll recall from the February work session, in the three areas that NEA gives us data on, on step, on the, on the beginning, we're kind of seven. In the middle, that kind of area that NEA chooses to kind of represent, we're like 12. And then at the end of the schedule, we're number one for the end of the teacher salary schedule. With the power of indexing, and you saw in the packet, the teacher salary schedule, the end of our teacher salary schedule, I'm really proud of. It's going to be very, very strong. So to answer your question, how do we change the front or even the middle of the salary schedule? We're probably going to need, if we really want to get aggressive and make changes there, then we're probably going to need to look at indexing at the teacher schedule, too. There was some early conversations in Team Lee Summit just about that concept and what it could look like. Nathan Holder and I have talked about what that would cost, just generally. We didn't run numbers or scenarios on it. But if you want to, if you want to affect the step one or the middle of the teacher schedule, you could adjust the indexing similar to what we're doing in the admin. I think there would need to be a lot of conversations about that, because then by design, you're putting a greater percentage of the dollars at the beginning and middle experience of the teacher schedule and not at the end. Similar to what we're doing with the admin schedule here. The raises for admin range from, and it's on that table we shared with you, about 12% if you're on the front end of the schedule in those steps one through six, to if you're at the end of the schedule or off-schedule, it's about 2.5% for the more experienced administrators.
Thank you.
Board Member Murdock?
Just a few from me here on this one. Can you essentially refresh our memories on the discussion surrounding the, the teachers that are as a part of policy GCBA? And what that discussion entailed within Team Lee Summit, since I was also a part of that, the charge there? Understanding that you may not be able to get into the full conversations, but...
Yeah, yeah, again, I wouldn't want to represent the entire room. I mean, at various times, there were a lot of different thoughts. I mean, we spent numerous hours on that topic. But the recommendation did come to let that policy continue, to let our schedules continue out and show our forward-facing schedules and no longer have the practice of off-schedule. Some, some factors in that is, the board policy is the board policy. We would need to change that board policy. Another factor is how competitive we are at the end of our schedule. I think that was a factor for some. I would also say that if it is, and I've mentioned this before, if it is, the board, the board gave thus direction in the fall, Team Lee Summit, to tackle this topic, and we spent a lot of hours on this topic and unpacking it and came with a recommendation. If there were some boundaries that we were supposed to work within, or if there is a desire for that policy to be revised or changed, or to give credit in some way, shape, or form, we'd, again, we'd be happy to bring options to the board of how we could accomplish that and the different considerations that would go into it. But when Team Lee Summit looked at, looked at that and looked at the, the people we're hiring currently from Kansas, from KC Mo, that have lots of experience that this policy affects, we hired someone two weeks ago that this policy impacts. The recommendation that it ended up being to let the policy stay in place.
Can I keep going?
Sure, yeah, go ahead.
If you have a follow-up to that point, go ahead. Okay, go ahead, and then I'll move to a different topic.
Vice President Fritsch?
Yes, member of Team Lee Summit, along with Board Member Sparks. One factor also that I think was taken into consideration was the amount of money that it would cost to give all years of service to those 76 staff members. I think it required, I remember the figure, it's somewhere over $300,000. Is that correct?
Yeah, it was about $360,000, $370,000 for all the folks that we pulled data on.
And just observed the discussion as the factor on that was that if we granted that, if we recommended that that was granted, then that would reduce the amount that we could give to all staff.
And the amount it would be reduced was about $100 to all four schedules based on what, what that money would, would be able to do to the, to the base. But we also did present options because, and I think this is a table you also have from last month, where, you know, how many people are affected based on how many years? Where we, we ran numbers, we, Nathan Holder ran numbers on, if you gave the current employees, you know, one to four more years, what would that look like? And what would it cost versus everyone? Which if we did everyone, then we would have someone, we'd need to create a 40-second step on our teacher salary schedule to capture all the years of experience that one of our employees that came, came in the last few years. That was also a factor.
Board Member Sparks?
So to, to Kim's point, that was the conversation, and I, while that conversation was happening, I basically wrote down. The gist of that conversation around that policy, I mean, I'm more so speaking to my colleagues, was dollar and cents. It was, it was about the money. And that is what is concerning me around this conversation, is because we went from, we went from talking about 370 something thousand pertaining to 76 employees, and but however, the amount of money that's being spent to address, I think, some fair inequities with the administrative schedule, it doubled of the dollar amounts when we talked about, because when we were basically, so, and this might even kind of go back to your initial, your first question. When we were talking about how we were going to spend the money, we basically put if we, if the ballot measure passed, this is what money we were able to work with. If the ballot measure didn't pass, this is the amount of money we was able to work with. And then as a collective group, we talked about what were the areas that we felt as a group needed to address immediately. And so you had obviously your representatives that, you know, advocated for certain things, but we also looked at data and things to support the areas that we wanted to make those addressing. And so as we were addressing those areas, basically, the pot starts going down. And I'll just say this, this is why I think that this is an important conversation. It's something that we're going to, this is going to have to be an ongoing conversation for us as a board, but it does concern me, and I think it concerns many of our staff, when we, when we talk about dollar and cents for teachers, even if it is just 76 of them, at 300,000, however, we ended up spending double of what we could have made right with the 76. And while I appreciate all that represents in Team Lee Summit, there are many that are concerned about what that looks like and what narrative are we painting as a district when we will not address 76 at $1 amount, but we're spending double when it pertains to our, our administration that are paid much higher than our teachers. But again, that's not to negate that there are some inequities in our administrative schedule that we do need to address. And these conversations have to be ongoing on making sure that we are doing right by our teachers and staff.
Vice President Fritsch?
Yes, and, and that was a conversation in Team Lee Summit, that although we did not look at that this year as a part of that, that we consider that in the following years, year or so. And that we look at that board policy if we just, if, if that, y'all want to decide that after I'm long gone, if y'all want, you know, look at that policy and change that and, you know, restore those, then it's up to you.
Murdock?
Do you may have anything else on that one, otherwise I'll, because I'm going to pivot topics here just a little bit. So, I'm just saying, we might as well stay on the same.
Board Member Eslic?
Well, I'll just add a little bit to that, because, Rodrick, to your point, I really did wrestle and struggle with the overall impact to the administrative schedule. While I 100% support our intent to raise the floor for our staff and admin who are in the buildings, working with our students every day, who were not up in competitive range compared to others in the metro there, that cascading impact to the rest of the administrative schedule that is really relatively small in terms of the number of people it touches, but dollar-wise, it, it feels like a lot when you have staff who are struggling daily in, in the classrooms with their workloads, and so I wrestled with this, too, a lot. I just kind of worked through some numbers based off of what we were presenting total dollar-wise, and, you know, we're allocating in salary improvements over $10 million to our staff, and that's across teacher, administrative support, professional, and this is all from this document that was provided to us last month. So $10,764,701 of that for what is going to SLC, it is 1.6% of that. So I can confidently say 98.4% of those dollars are going to the buildings, to the staff that we promised we would raise the floor to. So while there is a portion that I struggle with, I think given the task that we provided to Team Lee Summit and what they were able to come back with, with a consensus, I feel okay. I, it's not a perfect solution. I'll be completely honest, it's not a perfect solution. And I, I do still struggle with it a little bit, but when I look at the total dollars and what we are delivering to our staff, I feel a little bit better when I put it in that perspective. So I hear you. I'm piggybacking off of what you were saying, but that's all I wanted to say, just from a numbers perspective and percentages, total dollars, and what we're doing for our staff. You know, that's, that's a good thing, so.
Boy, and thank you voters, right? Board Member Murdock?
Yeah, so I think to add on to that, that actually segues nicely into my question, actually. We have a recommendation this year that Team Lee Summit has come up with, knowing also, though, that because of the generosity that we had from voters yesterday, this is going to be there next year, too, essentially. Was there discussion in Team Lee Summit over the last couple of months about how we will continue to look at positions of need, positions lower on in, in terms of wage, and maybe even in the future here within Team Lee Summit, separate things out even more singularly than we are just from a schedule perspective? You know, we've talked for a long time. We, we gave Team Lee Summit a job of essentially finding a needle in a haystack with the varying things that they were tasked with, because I, and I shared this with some of my fellow board members here, that they're not necessarily, they, a couple of those asks were very tough to make them compatible with each other. You know, to raise assistant principals and principals out of that bottom third, while also then making sure that we aren't adding too much to other administrators that may already be up there versus helping teachers, but also making sure that we increase support staff and going after those targeted areas. What does the future look like when we evaluate the dollars that will be available, not only non-allocated dollars, but obviously from the levy transfer dollars as we push forward into the next year?
So we'll, we'll continue our, follow our process and look at data. Look at market data, see where we're at, see where we're competitive. Something new that came at the direction of the board this year was, you know, you'll see on that document, we have several support staff positions and a professional staff position that, that we're changing ranges for, and we were actually market competitive with those jobs. But the board desired something to be done because they were high-frequency vacancies. We're hearing from our buildings, we have all these para-vacancies, we have custodial vacancies, people are having to work overtime. So that's why we've made those changes there, where some of those positions are getting up to a 17% increase in their pay rate. So we'll look at data again. We, we have the memory in the minutes from the previous year to bring forward on things that, that move forward. I'll say this was a unique year because of the support of our superintendent and Board of Education to go to the voters and the support of our voters, we were able to do a lot with over $12 million total. And that's, that's never happened before in Team Lee Summit, so we were able to really cover a lot of things. I say that to say we didn't end the year with a lot of things that we wanted to do that we necessarily could not. Don't hear, there's always more we want to do, and we want to increase salaries more, but we were able to really address a lot of our tough areas and the areas the board told us to ask, look at.
Would you consider Dr. Carlson a statement of Team Lee Summit came to a consensus recommendation to be a fair statement if I also put the caveat that there were people in there who didn't necessarily agree with the final recommendation, but were, got to a point where they were okay with it?
Yeah, and, and that's how we work through consensus with the norms and the guidelines with Team Lee Summit. You know, I, I would venture that maybe every person in that room would have said, hey, this isn't exactly what I would have wanted, asked for, designed. But that's where those robust discussions, and we spent more hours this year. We, we stayed every meeting till the end. We, the, the salary conversation dominated all fall and winter. It dominated the conversation. Agenda items got bumped to next meeting, bumped to next meeting to talk about this and create two options. So I think that is a fair statement, that, you know, maybe every person in the room said, well, if I really, if you gave me the chalk and the chalkboard, I'd have done this part differently. But everyone came together to, to a, a recommendation from Team Lee Summit that they could all support.
Okay, thanks, Dr. Carlson. I'll have a couple of comments in a little bit, but all the, the other people ask questions.
Do we have other questions? Board Member Foley?
Thank you. So I also have heard a lot of concerns in regards to the administrative salary schedule. And just kind of tossing around an idea, would it be at all realistic or even possible to split the administrative salary schedule apart? Or building-level staff versus SLC staff and kind of have two separate schedules? Kind of what, would that be possible and what would that process involve if it was?
Sure, it, it, it could be possible. You could separate out different positions and, and create different jobs and schedules. You could separate out different positions and, and create different jobs and schedules. That, that is possible. One of the advantages to having it all in one schedule is a lot of these jobs are interdependent on each other, and you avoid salary compression. So for example, we, we have some salary compression between teacher and assistant principal, which teacher's a common job that would lead to assistant principal, and currently, if you look, you see our assistant principal salary, sometimes teachers make more than our assistant principal, so we have some salary compression there. When you start peeling apart the entire schedule, some of those promotions that would happen maybe from, after you go from teacher to assistant principal to assistant principal, principal, principal director, executive director, assistant superintendent, if you, if you peel those apart, then you risk potential salary compression to where a person could maybe get a pay raise or make the same money by going to a position with lesser responsibilities, legal exposure, things like that. But it, it is possible to do that. There would be some things we would want to keep in mind between the two schedules.
Thank you.
All right, other questions? Right? Did you?
I'm just gonna make kind of final comments of what, where we're at on this. And, and I've shared, because we've, we've had phone calls, right? I mean, people know, we talk to each other when, when we can about these particular issues, and, and I think, Dr. Carlson, I hope people will understand that in this particular case, this is not a knock on how this went this year, because I, I believe we tasked Team Lee Summit with a very difficult thing this year, more than they've ever had, I guess, and maybe, maybe, and I could be wrong on that. Maybe they've had more difficult years in terms of developing a recommendation based on what we asked them to do. That being said, it's not the recommendation that I would do, but I'm not the one who makes this particular recommendation, so I'm just gonna start with that. I do think that Team Lee Summit, from a representation standpoint, from a meeting standpoint, deadline standpoint, dialogue standpoint, all those things needs an overhaul. That's my opinion, my opinion only. I think we need to, as a board, have a serious conversation this summer about what we want that to look like, understanding that going into the future, these dollars are still going to be there, at least in an anticipation of similar amounts, right? That we need to be able to allocate to staff and do a good job of making sure that, that is representative among all of the subgroups within our, within our school district. To member Foley's point about splitting salary schedules, we certainly could, could investigate that. We recently came off of though, having 20, however many, or maybe even more than that salary schedules.
Seventy-seven.
Yeah, that, and my, my fear is, is that you start separating one group, one group, one group, one group, and we end up back in the same problem of having too many salary schedules that actually cause more issues than we solve. And so I think that that is, that, that could be a concern if we start looking into that kind of solution. In regard specifically to the administrator salary schedule, we charged with trying to get the assistant principals and principals outside of the bottom third. A corresponding notion to that, obviously, is that the entire chart gets impacted by the re-indexing, and I think we're all familiar with what that means. I would like to see us, as we go forward into this, like I said, have another look at the, at the Team Lee Summit process, because from a board, just again, again, my opinion, I'm not sure that there is enough time for us to look at all of this information and have a great dialogue back and forth based on the recommendation, which is why today, like I will tell you, I will support the recommendation that's here today, understanding that it's not what I would have done necessarily, but I do value what the Team Lee Summit process went through, the consensus that they came to, and so, but I do think that there are some changes that need to be made in order for us to put forth a little bit better recommendation even next year. And that's no knock on the Team Lee Summit members, by the way, because I just think we can have a better process than what we currently have. Thanks.
So having said that, thinking about what Dr. Carlson had asked around boundaries or guidelines from the board, that would be an excellent.
Yes, we need, we need, not only do we want to make sure that Team, first off, the more people you get on a committee, I get it, the more opinions you get, the harder it is to come to a consensus. The flip side of me also says that 15, I'm not sure, is a great representative number for our district. The other part of that, that I think sometimes gets, gets lost is, is when Team Lee Summit members meet, they get information, they try to get back to their buildings, get any kind of building feedback. I'm not sure that there's enough of a flip time to be able to get that accurately report back to us, meaning us, by the way, as they come back to get to the meetings. You may have feedback as you come back to the next meeting, but then to try to still pull together the recommendation, get it to the board of education, us have time to digest all of that information and still come back to you with questions, I think that that condensed timeline has put us into a little bit of a stressful situation, and I just think that we could probably be, have a little bit larger Team Lee Summit representation, however we would choose to do that. Overall, that's my way of saying, I would love us to talk about it in the summer retreat, because we could address it before the next year of Team Lee Summit starts, which is when we need to be doing this anyway, and have that discussion and spend the time on it, to come up with a process that all of us, plus the people who got elected, which I see a couple of you here, so, that we need to have that discussion, and we need to come up with a process we all can get behind, so that when the recommendation comes to us, we go, well, we knew exactly what the process was, right? We saw it, we knew it went into action, this is what the result of it was, and it'll be a lot easier for us to come and go, let's do it, let's go, so.
So definitely talking about new board members in that new board orientation, including Team Lee Summit 101. Yeah, as well, so that they come into those conversations with a little bit of base knowledge. Yeah, thank you. Board member Sparks?
I'm gonna ask a question, and then I'll give my final thoughts. I know that we have been told a deadline. Can you reiterate absolutely what is the legal deadline that we have of issuing contracts to our staff?
I don't have a memorandum, so I can't quote it, but essentially, tenured teachers in the state of Missouri, by Missouri state statute, we must get contracts out to them by April 15th. Sorry. Probationary teachers. Tenured teachers by May 15th, probationary teachers by April 15th.
And with a tenured teacher, if they have till June 1st to say they're not coming back, and if they don't ever say that, then, then they're, it's an indefinite contract, so. You technically don't have, yes, yes, so. And then for support professional, there is no timeline on that, on those.
Support professional, they're at-will employees, and they get a compensation summary, they don't get a contract, so they're not bound by the same time frame requirement.
Just so that I, just so that I'm clear, tenured teachers, April 15th.
Probationary.
No, probationary.
Probationary teachers, April 15th.
May 15th for tenured teachers.
Correct.
And then all support staff that are at-will employees, there's no deadline for compensation package.
That is correct, yes.
And so in the event, as conversations continue, if we're wanting to do things with support staff regarding their salaries, we would just say, effective this date, this is what those new salaries look like.
So if you, and, and this might be more of a joke question, you can actually issue contracts and then pass a salary schedule after the fact, so you could say steps, I, I used to do this. In March, we would vote on giving a step to all staff, and then in June, we'd vote on the actual schedules, because they haven't served the first day of that contract or comp summary, so as long as you do it before they serve the first day of it, you can do that. Once they've served the first day of that, for some of these employees, that's July 1st, then you cannot, so.
Okay.
Thank you for Joe.
Okay. I'm not gonna rehash what Ryan has already stated, other than I completely agree with everything that he has stated. I want to, not only do I think that we need to have a one-on-one of Team Lee Summit, but I think we need to totally revamp the process of Team Lee Summit, of making sure that all voices are truly being heard from our staff, and that those, there's a formal way of seeing those voices reflective in those conversations around salaries and wants and desires and even needs. I appreciate the surveys that we do, but I'm not sure if that is reflective of the voices that we tend to hear as board members. And while we are a district that support people, I want to make sure that we're a district that also hear people, and so that's important to me, and I would like to make sure that that is what we're doing moving forward. Thank you. And I will support the recommendation, because I do understand the work that was put in, and while this would not be the recommendation that I would have put forth, I'll leave it there, but I will support the recommendation. Thank you.
Vice President Frichie?
Thank you. I just wanted to say that Team Lee Summit has already put in, is it five full days or six full days already this year? And I think Dr. Carlson alluded to that. I would personally just like to thank every single one of our Team Lee Summit members because of the sacrifice they, I mean, they, you know, you know how hard it is, you teachers out there to give up a day and having to make all your lesson plans and everything that's involved with that, takes hours to, to, to make those things out, and for them to be out of their classroom for that many days, or their nursing responsibilities, or business office, or whomever, is, is, is a big deal. A lot of them can't, you know, can't really, we've got Dr. Shelton and Mr. Holder in those meetings all the time, not doing, you know, what they normally do to get the job done, but that's because of that commitment to Team Lee Summit. And it's always, you know, from the time it was established, Team Lee Summit has always been held in high regard in other school districts around this area for the type of, of conversations they have without contentiousness that happens when unions take over and, and they, and they get into the system. So I, I think we need to honor the, the past of Team Lee Summit, and, and certainly the future, which can definitely involve changes in procedures and how we go about that, that these guys have suggested up here, and, and, you know, tweaking, tweaking things as we go along is a good thing. You know, you make changes as you need to make changes. So I, I appreciate that, that thought process too, and I think that is a good topic for your retreat this summer, some time spent on that. So just, I just wanted to honor though, the voices on Team Lee Summit, because each of them has had a, a big impact. Also want to say that because we have been so centered on the whole salary issue, and looking at that part of Team Lee Summit, we have not had time to do the qualitative or the comments portion of those surveys, and there are lots of staff comments on those surveys, and so that we haven't even dug into those comments yet, and that's where you get a lot of the voices that come in, and start to understand the full impact of what that survey is all about. So it's, it's really looking and reading every single one, for me, it's reading every single one of those comments and digesting that, and kind of, as I read, I create a whole other list of, here's the top ones, these are the ones that people keep saying that we need to work on, you know? And so it's important, that part is also very, very important. That's the other side of the coin for Team Lee Summit, that we still have work to do. So we have, next Thursday, all day is another meeting, and then we'll come back for our Thursday night board meeting, so it'll be like, start at eight and end at 11 o'clock at night for me and for Rodrick. So, but, you know, that's what we do. So, anyway, thanks, Team Lee Summit.
Board member Foley?
Thank you. I just have a, kind of a, a couple of follow-up final comments. I, I do have concerns about the administrative salary schedule, and I've had concerns that have been expressed to me by constituents, and not only just in, in the final numbers that were presented, but people have questioned in Team Lee Summit, are the group members able to have conversations and say, I don't want to give administrators any kind of money? Or are there administrators that are sitting there telling them, oh, no, it's across the board to everyone? Like, do they have that freedom to give pushback? Or is there a kind of that inherent, you know, the bias that comes from your leader telling you what to do? So I think that's something that would be, actually, first, I would let, like to actually have you address that if you don't mind, because I think that would clear the air for some of the concerns, if you can kind of speak to that, like, is there that, that tension going on where your person above you is telling you, give me a raise?
I, I'll rely on the board members to, to, to speak to this as well, but the quick answer is no. We have a facilitator that makes sure each voice in that room is equal, and it is very common, as I mentioned before, for members of Team Lee Summit and staff to, to, to direct, teachers and support staff members will direct Nathan Holder or me to say, hey, we need this, and will you go produce it? We're, we want to look at what this would look like, what this would cost. So I, from my perspective, no, but I, I also would rely on the board members to, to speak to that as well, if I'm misrepresenting.
Board member Sparks?
I want to be completely fair. No one is muzzled in Team Lee Summit. I'm not going to say that everyone speaks freely, but they truly have the right to speak freely during that meeting. It is an open format, people can speak their opinion, there's times where there has been disagreements, as it's been stated, it is facilitated to where they use different measures, kind of like what we have done with President Campbell with the thumbs, or, you know, the fists and those type of things. And so there's different things that we have kind of utilized to disagree. From me and board member Frisch, Frichie standpoint, we, we have chose to be reserved, so we, as individuals, board members, we have been reserved, but that's just because we have this platform to be able to have those discussions, and, but yeah, I mean, in short answer, no. They, they get to speak, they get to give their opinions, and my point is solely around making sure that additional voices that are back at buildings are making it back in this room, through those individuals. But yes, those individuals have the right to say whatever they may or what their positions are. And they have, yes.
Thank you, thank you for that clarification. Okay. I also do want to acknowledge board member Essek's point, that in the end, it is overall a small percentage. It's, I think it's, it's very much an optics thing, though, when people see that administrators are getting a raise, they will compare that number to what the teachers are making, and I do want to make sure that we're taking care of our teachers and support staff. I also want to share that I do have concern about the, the employees that have been speaking up over and over about Policy G CBA and how it's affected them. I do think that's something that we need to address going forward and, and to make it right as best as we can with those people. And I acknowledge that it is too tight of a deadline for us to make changes at this point, so there's no way that we could say, nope, scrap this, take it back to the Lee Summit, because then we're not going to be able to make our deadlines. So that is also something that I'd like to see us to be able to have more conversations in the future, kind of an earlier point, and really have an opportunity for discussion should we have concerns. Yeah, like modifying the timeline. And then my final point is that I just want to echo the sentiment of some of our other board members already, that I do appreciate all the hard work that Team Lee Summit has done in this. I know it is very stressful to have to make these kind of decisions that have such a big impact on so many people, so I'm grateful for the work they do.
Board member Essek?
Well, everybody had to make final comments, so I couldn't be the only one who didn't say anything. I will just echo everyone's appreciation for Team Lee Summit, for the board members who sit on Team Lee Summit, for the, the teachers, the staff, everyone who spends the amount of time that they do, because, you know, as we've heard, it is a tremendous amount of time and dedication, and this was a lot of work that, that Team Lee Summit put together. It's very much appreciated. We, we gave Team Lee Summit a very difficult task. I haven't sat on that committee, so I don't know everything that it entails, but the level of complexity and detail that came from that, out of that recommendation speaks to how much effort it must have taken, so very much appreciated. Again, I agree with board member Foley with regard to the admin portion of this schedule, which a lot of people have communicated about concerns. It is an optics, I agree. Overall, a small portion, and I do not think that, we don't have the luxury of trying to renegotiate this at this time. It is a good solution, even if it's not the 100% solution that we would, we would want. It's where we are right now, and I, I do support it, I get behind it, because I want to make sure that we take care of our staff going forward, so, thank you.
All right. Any other questions, comments? And I'll make a last comment. I want to take a moment. I want to take a moment to thank Dr. Buck for bringing this to the board, for starting these conversations, for really discussing the importance that we look out across our staff and decide how we best get up to market in areas, get up to hiring in areas, and are valuing our staff. I also want to say a special thank you to our community. We have a community that supports this district every time we ask them, and we take the time to ask in very factual ways, and to present the information in factual ways, and that builds trust in our community. And that was shown in this recent vote, with over 70% approving this, that was shown in every conversation I had with people in the community. They value our staff. As a board, we value our staff. And as a superintendent, I appreciate so much, Dr. Buck, that you value your staff. And so I'm excited to support this today. And so, with that, I'll ask for us to move forward. I would like to do a roll call vote. Mrs. Merk, could you help us with that?
Vice President Fritchy?
Aye.
Board Member Murdoch?
Aye.
Board Member Sparks?
Aye.
Board Member Eslic?
Aye.
Board Member Foley?
Aye.
President Campbell?
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you all, and now we'll close down, yeah, thank you, Dr. Carlson, now we'll close down here and move on to closed session.